All right. Welcome to the September 12th, 2016 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Before we start our regular business, I just wanted to say, it's with deep regret, that we note the passing of Barbara Clement, one of the constables for the town of Milford. Citizen that was involved in a lot of things and we want to, we want to just make sure that we acknowledge her passing and acknowledge the family and friends that our best wishes go out to, to the family and friends. And I'd like to have a moment of silence. Okay?
Mr. Chan, before you leave this, and of course Barbara Clement was just a great person, but there was also another individual who has contributed, who had contributed a lot to the town of Milford, who passed away, and that was Barbara Mena.
Ah, that's right.
Who was the former town accountant. And, you know, she was here when I was here, she was here when you were here too.
She was, yeah.
And did a great job.
She did.
So I was surprised to see that in the press. I didn't know, you know, any of the circumstances, but I know Barbara will be missed. She was a very hard worker for the town.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that up. And it's with that, that I just wanted to also acknowledge before we got started with regular business, there was a town employee involved in a charitable event this weekend. It was a great event, and it ties in with Barbara as well, Jackie Gray as well, where they acknowledged those that we've lost in the past year, and that's the Mickey Ward Bike Ride and fundraiser. And I know that each of the members of the Board of Selectmen participated, were there. And it's just a great event, and I wanted to call out, you know, just the fact that we sometimes don't take pause. We don't think about always, and keep people in our thoughts and prayers. This group does this year after year, and it's, it's run by Erica Robinson and Roger Dupree. And just wanted to say, call out to them especially, and especially where Erica is a town employee. She's doing great things when she's not here in the building, doing great things when she's in the building. And I just wanted to acknowledge them as well. Okay. With that, we'll get on to the regular business of the town. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
I'll move. Seconded?
I'll also approve, that's unanimous. Next is the approval of the August 29th regular meeting.
Motion. Seconded.
I'll also approve that, and that's unanimous. We also have the August 29th executive session.
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
I'll also approve, that's unanimous. Okay, very good. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is there someone in the audience who would like to talk to the board, approach the board who's not on the agenda? Okay, not hearing from anyone. We'll go on to the first public hearing and scheduled appointments. We have Christopher Bullock from ClearGov. And before you get started, I just want to acknowledge that this was asked for, this presentation was asked for after a meeting that I guess you had with Will. And I don't know, Will, if you had any comments in terms of introduction?
Sure, I'll just, sure, I'll just quickly say that I was introduced to Chris Bullock of ClearGov. And in that time, prior to actually physically meeting with him, I heard on the radio and from local other written media folks, that a lot of towns have been picking this up because it's a, it's a, it's a program that already exists, so towns don't have to invest in their own software or do updates to their own websites. The work's already being done. And quite honestly, I just, I had a presentation that we're probably going to see today. Mine may have been a little different, but it's really impressive, and now I see why towns in our area, as well as throughout the Commonwealth, are really starting to jump on this. I heard from a selectman I know in Dedham, and I know Uxbridge and some other towns around us, or Hope Dale, are really paying attention to this, and it's quite impressive. So I just wanted to make sure my colleagues were able to see it, and if there's something that we can decide to do in the future with ClearGov, I think it would be at least worth talking about.
And that's what we want to encourage, obviously, is for folks that see things, the board members or others, community members, want to bring new ideas, certainly is something we want to take advantage of. But with that, Chris, I'll let you introduce yourself and your company.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for, Selectmen, for having me out tonight. I thought I'd maybe just start by a little bit of background on myself, and talk about the company. I'll walk you through what we have online here, and then hopefully leave 10 minutes for questions and answers at the end. As I mentioned, my name's Chris Bullock, CEO and founder of ClearGov. My background's been in data and analytics for the last 15 years, particularly in the financial industry. I spent about eight years at NASDAQ, heading up analytical services for listed companies, and then most recently founded a legal analytics startup where we help companies benchmark legal cases. About a year ago, ClearGov started with one pretty simple question. Literally, my wife and I were sitting around the dinner table, looking at our monthly finances, and one thing really stuck out to me was my property tax bill. I just became curious as to where this money was going. I live in Hopkinton, and I decided to go on to the town's website and saw that they indeed were posting information about where my taxes were going via a financial statement.
Spreadsheet.
A spreadsheet that was, I don't know if I want to say buried, but it was 150 pages into a 230-page document. And I found two things from that. One was that the financial statements for the average citizen are really difficult to understand. There's a lot of terminology in there that I didn't understand. There's funds and transfers between the funds that I didn't get. But almost more importantly, there was really no context to the data. So for me, as a citizen, to see that our town spends $55 million on education is just a number I couldn't get my head around. What I really wanted to know was, is that high or low, and how does that compare to other towns in the area? And eventually stumbled across the fact that the Department of Revenue is collecting all this information from every town in Massachusetts, and indeed some other states, and decided that, what if we took this information and put it online in a format that made it very, very easy for the average citizen to see where the money's coming from, where it's going, and generally how their local government operates, but also give some context to that data? I think everyone here knows that numbers by themselves can be very misleading even, and that every number has a story behind it. So we introduced this platform in June of last year. Frankly, with no business model, we just thought it was an interesting side project. And very quickly, we started speaking with towns. And two things came from that. One, we found that nearly every town has a number of citizens, I'll just say, are very interested in the, in the town finances and want to learn more, request information. And this is very difficult for many towns with a small staff to keep up with. And there's also internal information requests, that department heads need information. All of this can, as I say, be very taxing. Also, there's, there's, many times, boards and committees will look to find cost savings or opportunities to become more efficient by benchmarking against their peers, and they found that oftentimes, committees will have different views of who their peers are. And it's very difficult to get everybody on the same page, and that they were looking for a tool that really gave them a definitive answer as to who they should be considering their peers and different angles of the data. So that's really where this concept of ClearGov Premier that you're looking at on your, on your desktop, is to summon up a way for towns to take control of their ClearGov presence and use it as a financial transparency center, as well as a benchmarking intelligence tool. So with that information, that prelude, let's go take a look at the live site. So this is cleargov.com. You can go to this website right now, and as you see, we cover six states at the moment. And you click on Massachusetts, and right away, you'll see that we've actually already created a page for literally every community in Massachusetts. So you can go on to any page, including Milford. I'll just type that in here. And you'll see that we've already created a page for Milford. A few things I'd want to point out. First off, it's 2014 data. Believe it or not, that's the most recent data that the Department of Revenue has. It takes them a couple of years to collect the data from every town. The next thing that we show is a demographic snapshot. We wanted to give the user a sense for how big is this town, and how does the home values and household income compare against the state median? This is all data powered by the US Census Bureau. We then show a financial overview. We show a breakdown of the revenues and expenditures. We break that down on a per capita basis, and then benchmark that against similar towns. And you can see right here that you can click on View Analysis, and we have built a benchmarking algorithm that uses several different means of finding peer communities. First off, we use population, of course. We want to find towns that are similar in size, and here we're using a 30% higher or lower deviation. We then look at home values, and we keep that deviation a little bit tighter at 20%. Then within that population, we look for a similar percentage of commercial tax assessment. We actually go about 50% higher in this range. And we start out with a six, with a 10-mile radius, and we expand that 10 miles at a time until we can find a good number of peers. In this instance, we found 10 peers. We also include the state average. You can see this town of Milford here. If you're ever curious as to why some of these towns are showing up in your peer group, you can go down here, see your population, home value, and commercial tax assessment compared to all the other towns that we found as your peer group. We then use that peer group to further break down the data, so that you can click into revenues, and you can see that 71% comes from taxes, 26% revenue from other governments, mainly state aid, and then local receipts. And then we benchmark each one of these on a per capita basis. So you can see taxes has a different benchmark than revenues from other governments, so the town is getting a lot of state aid, local receipts. And then you can also go back and look at the same analysis on expenditures. So here you have expenses. I can click View Breakdown, and it shows a very quick and easy understanding view of where the money's going. And then for each one of these categories, you see that it benchmarks against those same similar communities. And you'll notice that you can see a grayed-out View Breakdown button. This is reserved for towns that upgrade their page, and we'll show you what an upgraded page here looks like momentarily. The other thing that we do on these pages is we pull data from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So here's Milford Public Schools and Blackstone Valley. And for each one of these, we also create a peer group. And the peer groups through the school districts are a bit different. First, we look at schools with a similar number of students, 30% more or less. And then we look at the household income from the towns where those students are from. And these are weighted. So at Blackstone Valley, if you have 80% coming from one town and 20% coming from another town, the incomes will be weighted towards those, the student population. Here, we had to go a 30-mile radius. And again, you can see for each one of these school districts that we're comparing against the number of students and household incomes for each, and how far they are away. Also on this section, you notice a View More Education metrics is also grayed out. We'll show you what that looks like. Lastly, we show debt, 25% lower than that same peer group. Again, you can click on this and see that Milford's towards the bottom of the list. Now, you notice on every one of our pages, are you a government official? You can click on this, and if you'd like to learn more, it talks about our Premier Platform and shows you all the different features. But what I'd like to do is go back and just show you some of the towns that are using it right now. And the first one I'll show is Upton. So a few things that I'll note is, first off, you can see that they've customized their page, they've added their town seal, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. But most importantly, you see that it's 2015 data. So we connect with your accounting team, and we ask for an export from your financial system. We really only need six unique fields, account ID, account description, amount collected, amount expended. Very simple to get that export, and then our team maps your chart of accounts into our universal chart of accounts. And that's very important, because every town has a slightly different way of categorizing things. For the most part, you have the very same high-level buckets, like public safety and public works. But as you get more granular, things like maintenance of public grounds is sometimes put under public, public works, some towns put it under general government, some towns even put it under park and rec. And what we do is, we take extra special care in making sure that every single one of your chart of accounts, your, your accounts is in the same buckets as other towns. And our goal is that eventually we'll have a critical mass in Massachusetts where you can not only benchmark on the very high-level public safety, public work-type total budgets, but get very, very granular, and down to these line item-type levels where you can benchmark that data. Now, you could also show 2016 and 2017 data, and I can show you some examples of that, how towns are actually using this to share their budget. Okay? So that's, that's not a requirement, but it's certainly available, and I can show you what that looks like. Now, when the towns upgrade, we want to give them, we want to give a lot more context to the data. We mentioned before that we really believe context is king here. So for instance, we added this additional expanded demographics page, so you can see how the town population is growing over time. How fast is it growing? Does the population expand during the day? In other words, are a lot of people coming into this town during the day, do we need to provide extra public safety services, for instance? What's the population by age group? Do we have normally a large school age population, or seniors that you have to, that dictates additional services? The type of households? You know, how many number, how many households do we have? And how does that break down between families, married couples, singles, and seniors living alone? We also show an economic analysis, so you can see the breakdown of the different income strata. And then we benchmark both people earning above $200,000 and below $25,000, and show that median income right here. Lastly, we show a housing analysis, so you can see the percentage of renters versus homeowners, and how's that benchmarks against the state average, and median home values over time, and home value distribution. All of this is information that the executive team here takes into consideration every day when planning for budget and policy, and we're really trying to make this much more accessible and understandable. As we scroll down, I want to point out that when you're looking at revenues and expenditures for years such as 15, 16, and 17, there is no benchmarking for those years, because the state has not collected all the data. As soon as we get to the point where we have, you know, at least 100 clients onboard in the Massachusetts area, we can start benchmarking some of the newer data, so to speak. Now, you can also point out that when you click into revenues here, we activate a number of different features. You see all new ways of seeing the data, from bar charting to mountain charting. All of this is interactive, so if I just want to look at revenues from other governments, I can do that very easily. We can even show it in this, called a box chart, and you can click into each one of these now. Because we've gotten the data from your system, you can see the trending behind the data, and now I can click into each one of these categories. So now I can see where the taxes come from, how they break down between property and sales and excise tax, and you can even drill into each one of these even further. Again, same thing you can do on the expenses side. Yet this actually does something that's unique here. This asks you, do you want to put in your property tax bill? So I can put in a figure, and what it will do is take that number and apply it to each one of these numbers to show you what your contribution is out of your tax bill to these different expenditure categories. And so again, you can see the breakdown and drill into each one of these. So if I want to drill into public safety, I can see the breakdown between police and fire department, and for each one of these, I can drill into even further. I'd see the breakdown there. And we can even go down to the chart of account level detail. So if you're wondering what the fire department spent, $56,000 on supplies and equipment, I can click down right here, and I can see it down to the very minute detail. Some towns are actually taking this even a step further and making this information available on the checkbook level detail. So the town of Brookline, we just are, almost finished with a project with them, where you can actually click on radio repair right here and see which vendor they use. Yep. So that, that's an option. Again, not all of this information is, basically you can customize your page to what you see fit. So makes it very, very easy to really drill into and understand the finances of the town. Now, let me, if we're going to, I want to show the next section here, and I want to use another town on education, and that's Framingham. I realize it's a bigger town, but I think it has a really interesting story. So Framingham's another one of our clients, and they spend 37% more than similar towns on education. And when they saw that, they said, "Yeah, but there's a lot of factors that are driving that. You can't just look at that number in and of itself." So we worked with them, and we created this additional module that shows information around the school district. So you can see the number of students. I can see the enrollment by grade. And for Framingham, you could see that there's a large swell of students coming through in the younger grades that they need to prepare for in the high school. We also benchmark special needs students, from income-assisted to English language learners to special education students. And they very quickly saw that they have 72% more English language learners, and 23% more special education students, which require additional staffing to support. And indeed, you could see that coming through the numbers here, and they had 42% higher full-time equivalent staff members here than similar schools. And this is important, because there was a lot of online debate, and people saying, "Oh, we're just overpaying our teachers." And when we looked at this information, you could actually see that their average teacher salary is only 2% higher than similar schools. So they were literally able to share this with the town meeting members and everybody at the town meeting, and craft this story that, look, we are, our headcount is being driven by some of these higher-needs students, and they're actually taking this data to the state and advocating for reimbursement on English language learner students. So they're using it in a whole new way that we never even expected. Now, I want to wrap this up here by just showing one more thing on the Upton page, is that you can add a commentary. And this is also a very important contextual feature here. So as you scroll down on Upton's page, you can see that their debt over time is rising. To the average citizen, they may say, "Whoa, what's going on here?" But you can see that the town manager has added some commentary, that they have, their debt load has increased due to building of a third well field, renovation of town hall, and purchase of a fire truck. So we really created this feature where you can add commentary to any number on the website and provide that backstory, so to speak. You can see the same thing here. Another feature is that you can add other funds, such as enterprise funds or reserve funds. And they wanted to point out that, that they have an especially strong reserve ratio. You can see that over time as made up of the stabilization fund and free cash. If I just wanted to drill into free cash, I could do that very easily. So that's a quick, high-level overview of the public-facing, upgraded ClearGov page. The way that towns are using this is that they are linking off to it, generally from their homepage, and this is example of Easton. So they created, we created this banner for them, Financial Transparency Center. This, this links directly to that page that I showed you. Sudbury is another town that uses the platform. You can see Sudbury by the numbers. Transparency Center links here. So we can work with you to integrate this into your own site. As Will mentioned, there's nothing that you have to build. There's a very low upfront investment from your team, and then once it's implemented, you can just send us each year's data as you go forward, and we'll do all that work for you. Now, I won't get into in-depth on this piece of it, but I, if I could, just go on maybe a couple minutes longer here, because there is a whole nother side to the coin to ClearGov. Town administer, or town officials can log in to our back office system. And this is a tool that the public does not see, but what this does is allows you to reply to any comments that come in. So when someone leaves a comment on the site, it gets, goes to an email notification to your team, and then you can decide whether to reply to it in public or in private. You also have the ability to manage the financials, so if you want to start planning budgetary items, you can start entering those in here and then share that just internally, so you don't have to share it publicly. You can turn the public view on and off on a particular year. And then you can also add that commentary that I mentioned. So if you wanted to add commentary around taxes, you can just type that in here and click Save, and it shows up on the site. So very, very easy, easy platform to use. But these two tabs are what I wanted to point out as tools for the executive team to use. And this allows you to create your own benchmarking peer groups very, very quickly. So if we're looking at this, what this shows is every town in the, in the state, and you have population down here, so this shows Boston over here to the far right. And then, and then value per capita, this is showing you the spend per town, and I'm going to look at expenditures on education. And now I can see that Sherburne spends the most per capita on education. But you don't want to compare yourself to get everybody in the state. So you can click Change Parameters here, and I can very quickly say, let's just look at towns within a 50-mile radius. Let's look at towns with populations under whatever you want, and then household income that's much closer to our towns. And it'll instantly update your view here, and then I can look at it from a number of different angles. I can even look at a bar ranking. I can look at a bell curve analysis to see how far you are off on the average. And these are the types of tools that our clients are helping us develop to be able to look at the data in new and custom angles. So for instance, you could even look at the public works department by looking at towns with similar road miles, or similar land area, or similar density. So there's a multitude of ways to use our tool for back office planning, again, that the public does not see. So I will leave it there. There's actually a lot more, but hopefully this gives you good insight.
This is a great overview. You know, we'll, we'll try to wrap up in a couple minutes even with our questions, but I'll go to the board members and see what questions they have. Go ahead and have a seat.
Correct.
Ryan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, very interesting presentation. A couple of questions, when you were showing the Milford site, you targeted, I think, what was the word? It was commercial assessments, but residential values?
Commercial tax assessment and median home value.
Medium home values. Okay, so when you say medium home value, what are you drawing that from? Are you drawing that from actual sales as opposed to a town's assessment?
The US Census Bureau tracks median home values.
Okay, so...
Through your American Community Survey. I can send you information on that.
No, no, I'm just trying to see whether or not you're comparing apples to apples when you're talking about your residential and your commercial, because it seems as though you're drawing off of the commercial assessment by the town, but then a median value on the residential. Is that, what's the, what's your rationale for that?
Well, we, we started out with home value. Certainly wanted, so let me give you a little history. We started out with just population, and then we were finding that we were comparing Upton to Wellesley, right? And then we layered in home value, I'm sorry, the home values. And we wanted to use home values as a proxy for tax, you know, property taxes. And then we got feedback from towns that said we were comparing them to other towns which had a very high commercial tax base, so that the contribution from the residents was not equal. And we, we first thought about using the commercial tax levy, but since towns have split rates, we decided to use commercial tax assessment as an equalizer.
So your commercial tax assessment, is that an average number for the commercial property in the community, or? Yeah, it was on the Milford page. I didn't see it on the other page.
It's on, it's on, it's actually on every page. You didn't see it on the other pages, because we were looking at 2015 data, so the benchmarking is not on there. But if you went to their, Upton's 2014 page...
Okay, so what I'm looking at here is your median home value and your commercial assessment.
Right.
So I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how you're drawing similar comparisons between the residential and the commercial. It seems like you've got...
We're not, we're not drawing similar comparisons. We're just using it as a filter in our algorithm.
Okay.
So to find these 10 towns, we first start out with, let's take all towns in Massachusetts, and winnow it down to population between about 20,000 to 37,000.
Yeah.
Which is 30% more or less. Within that population of towns, let's only look at towns with a certain range of home values, so we have a measure of affluence. And then within that, we say, all right, let's winnow out the ones that only have a similar commercial tax base. And then we look for that in a...
So your commercial assessment is in the aggregate for the entire community?
Correct. We get, so we get that from the Mass DOR. They give us a breakdown of all of the tax assessments. We take the percentage of commercial tax assessment over the overall tax assessment.
Okay, so you're actually looking at the residential and the commercial in different lights?
We are.
You're looking at the commercial and the aggregate on the actual assessment, which is what taxes are based on, but your median home value is analysis based on actual sales, which don't really reflect on, on assessments?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and home values are a lot more relatable to the average citizen.
Yeah, okay. No, no, I understand, and... No, no, I understand. And I was very interested to see how you, the other question I was going to have is, how did you center on those four factors to find comparables?
You know, frankly, it's just been, in any entrepreneurial endeavor, trial and error.
Okay.
You know, I'd say, when I first started at it, it was just population. Very quickly, people said, you need to use home values.
Sure.
We've evolved it over time.
Could you flash up the Milford page again, showing the comparables? Because I thought that was interesting, because that is something that we deal with fairly regularly in terms of analysis, you know? Most recently, the Personnel Board did something. And, you know, it's always a question, well, you know, how can you find a comparable town and so forth? So I was very interested to see this, because some of these towns on there, you know, I don't ever recognize as having been listed as a comparable for the town of Milford.
Right.
So I think it's very interesting that you were, and as I look at these towns, as I know them, you know, generally, you know, Stoughton, the Tewksbury, you know, it makes a lot of sense, you know?
Yeah, the other way to think about this is, this is just kind of what the public sees, but, you know, we recommend actually using other filters when you're comparing certain aspects. So, for instance, if you want to benchmark Public Works, you probably want to use different filters. So if I select Public Works, we suggest maybe using population, then using land area, and road miles.
Okay, so this is a different function that you have?
Yeah, this is a different function, and you can tweak these numbers. So this would give you a whole different peer group just for Public Works.
Okay, so you're not locked into those four factors for everything?
Correct. You can make your own benchmark in the back office.
That's interesting. And then I'll move it along, but the only, and I don't know if you wanted to get into the actual cost of the program, or I was going to ask some questions as to what that cost is to the town?
Yeah, we have a sliding fee schedule based upon the size of the town, and we've already quoted this before for six thousand dollars flat fee per year.
Okay.
That includes implementation, includes as many user accounts to the back office as you'd like. We really, really like to keep things simple. We don't want to nipple-and-dive, just one flat fee. We invoice it upon starting the project, and that's it until the next year.
Okay, and that's a year-to-year cost?
Correct.
Has it increased with other communities?
We just launched the platform in December of fifteen.
Okay, so...
We haven't had annual increases, but we're certainly mindful that people don't like to see large increases every year.
Okay, so it's obviously...
That's the whole point of this.
Well, that's good. Thank you very much.
And if we do, people will see it, right?
Yeah. That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Will, yeah, I'm going to be brief. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Brian for, you know, allowing Chris to come. This is just something that I got to play with for quite a while after even meeting with Chris, and it's just pretty simple, pretty exciting to have all of this information at your fingertips. And again, not to try to replicate this in-house, not to do that. It's already done. And then on the back office stuff, that's why I was so interested in, and I still look forward to hearing from Rick and Zach at some point in the near future, you know, how they see this. I think just on the public side of it, it's worth it. But even on the back end, if this is something that our team could use, so that's something I, and my only question was just going to make sure that he covered the cost, but Brian asked about that, so I guess I'm interested in what you think.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that strikes me right away is it's not new, it's not new work for our staff. And it represents tools that are available without new, without new work. So if we can have deeper analysis, broader analysis, we're always asking for benchmark data. We want to understand that. What do you see coming for features down the road? Like, you know, as an example, you know, if I were, say, I wanted to use this tool, if I were thinking about purchasing a home and had five communities in mind, one of the things, how would I be able to compare services? You don't have to give me a demo, but is that, so is one charging for bags and, you know, fees for trash, as an example? Does one have sewer or some type of fund that's built into the tax rate, and somebody else has an enterprise fund? So do, what are the services that come for that tax rate? Is that, because that's one of the things that I'm interested in.
Yeah, no, I think that, what I'll say is that we are always very, very interested in partnering with our municipal clients to come up with new data sets that they're looking for that, frankly, we would probably have to go out and gather manually.
Right, right.
And, you know, it, once we build one feature for one town, all the towns get it. So really, the ClearGov platform has been a crowdsourcing of different ideas from all of our clients, and so we're certainly open to those ideas. I will say, one of the things that we are working on is a whole new transparency platform for schools.
Okay.
And it's not only just going to be fiscal transparency, but test scores, diversity analysis, staffing analysis. There's tons and tons of data out there about the schools, but it's really not accessible to the public in a format that's understandable.
Yeah, so some of the things I'd be interested in, in understanding whether they're coming down the pike, or understanding of fees and services, because that's part of the story of a tax rate, right?
Yep.
Whereas somebody else's tax rate could be lower.
Yep.
You could just get feed to death by municipality, and then you go, well, it's kind of like condo fees when you buy a house.
Yep.
Right? You know, I don't have to mow the lawn, but those condo fees can go up, right?
I think one of the things that we're looking to do more is shift, not just to focus on general fund, but have enterprise funds looped in there, so you get a fuller picture, yeah.
I didn't see IT as a breakout.
Oh, IT's in there.
It is.
It's under general government, yes.
Okay. I imagine that's got to be extremely painful, the way different municipalities break out their IT.
Frankly, I don't do the classification.
All right.
I've got a controller that does it, but yes.
Okay. And, you know, those are just my thoughts. It's an extremely powerful tool. I can see communities, residents being able to use this tool. I can see, I can, I have a thought about how it might be used by employees, but again, I'll reserve that in terms of how the municipal employees and Rick and Zach, our Budget Director or our Finance Director views that. Maybe that's something we could get for maybe the next meeting. What do you think? We'll put that on there, because we're not heavy on the next meeting, so...
That'd be perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, please.
We talked, you talked about if the school were to join us, you have a platform for the school? Did we talk about...
Yeah, so we're announcing a platform in mid, I'm sorry, early November, and we, it will be a separate service, because it'll be a completely new page, they'll get completely different back office with all different metrics for them to filter by. But we are, we do foresee doing package deals with the towns.
Both the town and the school side?
For both the town and the school side. And one of the things that we're offering right now is if a school signs up before our November launch date, we'll give them fifty percent off.
So let me understand the cost of the six thousand dollar number. I saw some of those where schools were portrayed. Does that include...
Yeah, so that school page that you saw is going to look a little bit different, and it will show, we're going to add some numbers to it, but it will, there's going to be a whole new set of pages.
A whole new set?
Yeah.
And that would be a different set of fees?
There's going to be like twenty new pages for schools.
Okay. I just want to know what the difference is, not the difference, I want to understand what comes with the six thousand.
Yep.
And so that's what you portrayed today and gave us examples of.
The school page I showed you today will be a little bit different, but...
Right, right. I mean, but that's future enhancement. There'll always be new software, new tools, okay.
All right. Very good. Chris, it was a pleasure meeting with you. Appreciate you answering our questions. We've got a lengthy agenda, so I want to get to that. But I also want to make sure you stay in contact with Rick. We're going to be discussing at the next meeting, next Monday, what the administration's response is to the tools that you've given demos on, to the people that you've given demos on, and what might be useful for them.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, Chris. Good to meet you.
Andy, thanks for helping with that. It makes a, it makes a, they need a stepstool, Andrew. You want to do it safely, too. We're going to clear the way for you, so, short of taking a recess, we want to make sure that you have a safe means of egress here.
That is mine, yeah.
Okay, Margaret?
Yeah.
Next, we have Carolyn and Rand Barthel to discuss Spectra Energy Pipeline. And Margaret, you had some introduction as a Milford resident.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to be here and introduce Rand and Carolyn, because I'm a longtime resident in Milford. I care about the town a great deal. I know I've only lived here thirty-three years, but I'm not a Milfordian yet, but I'll get there. But one thing I really like about Milford is that they always seem to do the right thing, and I think that Carolyn and Rand have been doing tremendous work, very grassroots-based. They're fighting and dealing with a huge engineering project that's coming to our region. So they themselves are not from Milford, but they've been able to rally the troops in many, many towns. And I'm really asking people to give an open ear and to listen carefully to what they have to say, because I think they have good things to say.
Okay, all right, thank you. Margaret?
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you very much for having us give a presentation to you. We will be as quick as we can. It's a complicated issue, and so first of all, we're Margaret, Carolyn and Rand Barthel. We live in Mendon. We've been here for over twenty-five years. We're members of 350 Massachusetts, which is a statewide network of climate activists all over the state, from the Berkshires to the Cape. We've given presentations in Franklin, Medway, Millis tomorrow night, Norfolk, Walpole, Sharon, and Upton. And the towns so far that have taken a position about the pipeline, to be against the pipeline, are Walpole, Sharon, Stoughton. Upton has, is working with their citizens and a cushion it. And because of the time constraints, this is a very complicated issue with many layers, but we obviously need to keep it in the time constraints. So you all have had this information in advance, so we will just gloss over a lot of this stuff. But at least you know that the people who are watching this will know that the information is there. We're not Whistling Dixie.
Yeah, it may be best if you not try to go through all forty-something slides.
Yes, exactly. We aren't. We're going to, we're going, this is going to be a really fast one. So we also have a website. It's called nospectra ma.org. We have a Facebook page, Greater Franklin Node 350 Mass. We have a group page. We have meetings on the first and third Thursdays of the month at the First Universalist Society, 262 Chestnut Street in Franklin.
Okay.
So this is the Spectra Access Northeast Project. You can, it, this map is so large that it really looks like it's all one, the blue line is all one piece, but it isn't. It's actually two different pipelines. The one, you know, there's the Q1 Loop, which is east of here, and you would, you are slated to be on the West Boylston Lateral, which goes from Medway all the way up to West Boylston. This is a map from the Atlantic Bridge Project, which is the preceding project, which is still in process. But I'm putting this in here because they are expecting to do some export. Enbridge Corporation in Calgary, Canada, and is, has, is in the process of buying out Spectra. This has just happened in the last week. This is brand new. And they are, they are very much interested in export. So this is, you know, we're in the middle of this. So it's a sixteen, the West Boylston Lateral is a sixteen-inch pipeline. It operates at, would operate at seven hundred and fifty pounds per square inch, which is a very high pressure. These are the towns that are affected on the West Boylston Lateral. The pipeline goes through Milford. We have an evacuation zone itemized. Because of the sixteen-inch pipeline and the seven hundred and fifty PSI for the pressure, it's about at a thousand feet on either side of the pipeline that would be the minimal evacuation zone. So you can see the rough location of this. So now, Rand will have a chance to talk about justification.
Okay. All right, so now we're, I'm going to take you on a high-speed train ride through how this whole project is being justified at the state level. And basically, the basic argument is being made that there is a need for new gas pipeline capacity in order to guarantee that we have adequate to generate electricity with in the wintertime. And so, again, I'm going to, we're going to keep moving. So the, the people, the institutions involved in this are the Department of Public Utilities and the pipeline companies, the major utility companies in the state, EverSource and National Grid, and Governor Baker. Until recently, the plan that all of those institutions had to pay for this pipeline was to, and we're talking three billion dollars in total, was to have electricity rate payers pay a surcharge on their utility bill, which would have affected everybody in this area. And that has been found illegal by the Supreme Judicial Court recently. And so, as things stand now, Spectra, the pipeline company, is now looking for new mechanisms to fund this very expensive project. But you can be sure that they are looking for ways to get us to pay for it one way or another. So the actual problem, we do not actually have a, an actual shortage of pipeline capacity. What we actually have is an interval in the middle of the winter when momentary demand sometimes rises above what the pipelines can deliver at that moment. And that arises because we have a cold winter and our, and our electricity system is very dependent on natural gas in the state. We generate sixty percent of our electricity by burning natural gas. This diagram gives you an illustration of how this works. What you see here is daily demand for gas, and this is actually for all of New England, sorted, this is the days of the year sorted by gas demand in decreasing order. And so, you know, high demand on the left, those days actually are deep mid-winter days. Low demand on the right. The green line that you see across there is the current pipeline capacity, combined pipeline capacity into the region. The overall Spectra project that we're talking about would basically raise that green line to the next graph line above it. And so, the little toe portion over on the top left there is the, represents the times during a year when it can happen that we don't have enough pipeline capacity to deliver the momentary demand. The, the, the large white, and you can see that if you raise the green line, it reduces that, but the large white region between the green line and the gray curve is, represents excess capacity. And that excess capacity will increase a lot if this is built, okay? So, so it is our contention, and there are independent studies by the Attorney General that back this up, that say that, you know, pipelines are a very expensive way to meet this, this momentary demand that sometimes happens, doesn't even always happen. And in addition, pipeline construction requires imminent domain takings, easements, reduces property values, et cetera. So there are drawbacks to having a project like this. And then there are other drawbacks that affect the people in the region where it's happening. There are health and safety hazards associated with pipelines. And in addition, from a climate change perspective, building new permanent infrastructure like this kind of signs us up to go on having a high carbon footprint in the future, which is not good for our future. And it would also make our over-dependence on gas to generate electricity worse. All right. So the studies that have been done, the independent studies, all point to a number of things that can be done instead, that are all more cost-effective than, than asking the region in one way or another to pay for a big new pipeline. And these are the independent studies that back up what I'm saying. Again, we're going on a high-speed train ride here. Let's see, so the, all that excess capacity that I... So the, all that excess capacity that I showed you on that graph will not sit idle. It will be used. And, you know, with the acquisition by Enbridge, we're quite certain that it will be used to export gas overseas, where it will connect the domestic market with foreign markets where prices are much higher. And so we would expect to see, over time, prices for gas go up if that happens. Pipeline safety issues. So pipelines, in addition to the primary, natural gas, the primary component of it is methane, but because gas today is obtained by fracking, pipelines also carry all of these compounds that are found in fracking chemicals. All of these benzene compounds and so forth, they're all, they're all very toxic in a lot of different ways. And, you know, they, and of course, it's okay while it's in the pipeline, but if it leaks out, then it's a problem. And pipeline operations do sometimes vent gas at compression stations and at pressure-reduction stations. Pipelines can leak, rupture, and explode. There was recently an explosion of a pipeline down, this is about a week ago, there was an explosion of a pipeline down in New Mexico, which killed eleven people. It created a crater eighty feet long, forty feet wide, and twenty feet deep. This happened back in April in Pennsylvania, another of Spectra's pipelines. This one incinerated a house four hundred yards away. Here's an example of an aerial view of an explosion zone in Texas, showing that the heat of these explosions is so intense that it melts the ground around it and incinerates everything for hundreds of yards around. The nation's pipeline infrastructure and inventory is growing and also aging, and as that happens, the rate of incidents is tending to go upwards as well. Basically, the bottom line about first responders for a town, your fire department, is if something happens to the pipeline, all they can do is evacuate people. The heat is so intense that all you can do is wait for the pipeline company to shut off the gas. That can mean that all the gas between valves several miles apart has to bleed off and burn before the fire stops. So basically, this is an issue where local towns like Milford are being exposed to risks and will not be actually benefiting from any of this gas. All right. And I'm going to let Carolyn talk about the climate change issues.
So we all, I think probably in this room, could probably agree that the Earth's climate is warming and that we are the cause of it. And we're seeing evidence everywhere. We are seeing it here in Massachusetts with the extreme drought that we're having. This is an average global temperature. You can see from 1880 up to 2010 that it is on the rise. That's the global temperature. This is atmospheric CO2 variations since the year 1000. So it's just, you know, you're seeing a hockey stick, you know, hockey-stick effect. It's just going straight up. And the smaller version is an expansion of the last few years, and you can see it's just on its way up. We're well over 400 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere at this point. So far, we've had an agreement in Paris in December to limit our carbon emissions so we can keep to two degrees or maybe even 1.5 degrees Celsius. That means we have a carbon budget. We only have a certain amount of carbon that we can actually burn without making the Earth inhabitable in the long run. So that requires two-thirds to four-fifths of existing carbon reserves to not be burned. And we have a short window of time. We have twenty to thirty years. So the more that we put pipelines in the ground, and they're going to want to run them for fifty years, the Algonquin Pipeline that's in this area is fifty-three years old. It was built in 1963. The legislature in Massachusetts has passed the Global Warming Solution Act in 2008, which says we have to reduce our carbon emissions eighty percent by 2050. And we have a lot of policies that are beginning to support that information, that intent. However, on May 5th, the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that we really, it is a law that we have to pay attention to. We can't just think it's a good idea and put some, throw some policies at it. We have to really be very deliberate, and we have to establish a year-by-year declining carbon dioxide emissions target and enforce them. So natural gas is a fossil fuel. It's almost pure methane, and when it's burned, it becomes CO2. But leaked methane, unburned, is eighty-six times worse as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide over a twenty-year period of time. It's just very intense. And when you look at that, it is essentially, with all the methane leaks that happen, and we have tons of them in Massachusetts, like 20,000 of them, that gas is as damaging to the climate as coal is. So the pipelines are a step in the wrong direction. We really need to, you know, we would have, in order to meet the Global Warming Solutions Act, we would have to shut down these pipelines. And once you've got a pipeline in the ground, nobody's going to want to turn it off. So pipelines will do everything they can to keep it rolling. And this gas, which would be exported, you know, is going to go elsewhere. You know, we all have one atmosphere. That's all we've got. This is it. There's no planet B. So what citizens can do, these are landowner issues when people are butters, could be butters. These are things that they have to be considered, need to consider in their being landowners. These are the kinds of rights that are available to them. What towns can do, you can create protective ordinances. And I've indicated this SEDF, that's the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund dot org in Pennsylvania. The comparable organization up here is the Conservation Law Foundation. You can collaborate in multi-town coalitions, and you can also become intervenors in the FERC process. That gives you legal rights, and if you are interested in pursuing some of that, I have some basic information about what kinds of rights it gives you as an intervener. You don't have to have a position for or against the pipeline, but it does give you legal ability to function in dealing with FERC, which is really important. If you don't become an intervener, you don't have, you don't have that option. So, you know, this is kind of the general process about how it works. They're going to be filing the, FERC will be putting their application in in November, most likely.
Spectra will be.
I mean, I'm sorry. What did I say?
FERC.
I'm sorry. Spectra will be submitting their application to FERC probably in November, although with the pipeline tax that just got, came down in August, that got, that got killed, plus the fact that Enbridge is now going to be in the process of buying Spectra, it's going to be interesting to see whether, if that changes the timeline or not.
Yeah, there's a lot of people speculating this is going to get pushed way out now.
Yeah, who knows? Yeah, this is going to be interesting. There are a lot of moving pieces now.
Sure, sure.
So this is our website, our Facebook page, email. And if you have, I have some information if you'd like to know more about intervening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you taking the time to come out. I just want to say it was on Brian's recommendation, where he had talked to you previously and thought it would be a good opportunity for this board and our community to see that. I think the community and certainly our legal staff are aware of how to become intervenors in a DPU process. And we understand the obligations and limitations if you don't become an intervener.
Right.
I think it's a, we'll see where that takes us right now, but appreciate the data.
I understand. There's a lot to sort out. This is a complicated issue. And, but I will be, I'm happy to give this to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So, you know, if we, if there's any, you know, and I have a resolution, if you would like that, I didn't pass it, you know, bring that with me, but, you know, whatever, you know, if we can help you and.
Yeah, let us.
We have a number, I have a number of resources. I've worked, we're working with people who very successfully killed the Kinder Morgan-Ned Pipeline. And we're really instrumental in that. And, you know, I have resources all over the place.
Okay. We, I want to say from speaking on behalf of the board, we appreciate your passion. The amount of time has to be enormous that you've spent researching and looking into this. I know that we've been watching it progress, and with the recent Mass Supreme Court ruling that makes it, that certainly makes the process a lot more difficult for any pipeline to go through there. Certainly, they've got to go, now go back and sharpen their pencils to figure out how they're going to fund it.
Yep. Oh, yes. Yeah, this is going to be interesting.
That was a great case. Very happy with the results of that personally. People can, no, but people can feel differently about things, and certainly I respect that. But let me go to the board members and Ryan?
Yeah. Well, thank you. You can sit down, Carol. You don't have to stand up. The microphone's just for the TV. Excellent presentation, and, you know, it was something that was very informative to me, both when you both presented it to me. You know, Milford needs to be very, very concerned about this because the pipeline is going right through our community, and it's going to affect a number of residents. So, you know, we need to be on top of this, both with our planning and engineering department and our legal department, to monitor that FERC process. We've been intervenors in a number of actions, so it's something that the town does and does very well. So, you know, at least from my perspective, that's something that I think that we absolutely will positively be a part of and a strong part of, as well as working with the residents who are affected, to make sure that they understand the consequences of having this thing in their backyard. And they themselves may wish to be intervenors. There's nothing that might limit an individual from doing that.
You just can't do that.
So let me ask you a couple of questions, okay? So playing devil's advocate now, you know, the energy companies, they're telling us that this is going to save everybody money. Why isn't it going to save us money?
Why is it going to save us?
Why isn't it not going to save us money? You know, National Grid, you know, all the promo stuff that we've gotten, you know, I've gotten this stuff from Spectra. I went to the presentation, you know, and this is going to save money for everybody, reduce energy rates and all of that. Why is that not going to happen?
I don't believe it's going to happen because we are geographically, up in the corner of the country. If we lived, if we were in the Midwest, where there are all kinds of pipelines and going every which way, but we're kind of at the end of the road. And so our, so in that way, that geography is not going to change. And actually, because Massachusetts has been such an energy-efficient leader for seven years, we're number one in the country for seven years at least. I've lost track of the number of years. We are actually, even though we pay higher prices, we're actually doing really remarkably well because we are so efficient. And our costs for energy is going down because people are doing LEDs, there are people are getting electric cars, there are, you know, there's just all kinds of efficiencies that we are now able to have. And the fact that if this pipeline goes through and it winds up exporting, and I think it is a very, especially with energy, you know, with Enbridge coming through now with being part of Spectra, I think it's a very good chance that we will all pay higher prices because it will be exported. And, you know, prices are two to three times elsewhere in the country, in the world.
Yeah, the primary export market would be Europe, where prices for natural gas are much higher than they are here. And so you add to that the fact that they will be building this very expensive pipeline, which they will need to recover the cost of somehow. And it's going to be coming out of the pockets of residents here in one way or another, whether it's their gas bill or their electric bill. And so I think that there, the studies that have been done by the Attorney General's office all point to ways to deal with the price spikes, which are the primary reason why they say this would save us money, that are much more cost-effective than building the pipeline.
Yeah, the demand response, which means a distributed grid, and energy efficiency and renewables.
And the layout that you had showed us early, early on on that fast-moving train, was a pipeline infrastructure basically targeted to go up to the coast of Maine.
Yeah, and there are already, those pipelines already exist. The Maritimes and Northeast Pipeline, which used to bring gas down from Canada, their intention is to re, is to reverse its direction, to go up to LNG terminals that are being planned in Nova Scotia.
Okay. And so that's significant because they have facilities and depot areas that can then export over to your.
They aren't built yet. They are dependent on this project. They aren't built yet. They're waiting for this project to get accepted.
To get built.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, no, I want to thank you for certainly enlightening me, and that's why I thought it was important for you to come to our board. You know, we are on television. Residents can see this information, learn more about it. And you said you had brought a resolution tonight for us?
No, I can't, I do have wording for a resolution, if you would like to do that.
And how many different towns have enacted this resolution?
Oh, towns have, you know, towns do their own thing, you know.
They do.
All towns do.
And we would too.
They all do. But I, but.
Well, it was a certain basic theme that was common to all.
Yes, there is a basic theme. But basically, the towns of Walpole, Sharon, Stoughton, Akushnet, and I would also assert the, Upton. Upton was not actually, the Board of Selectmen was not making, taking their own stance. They were reflecting the citizens' comments during the scoping period and sent that in to FERC. So they have not actually taken their own stance, but they wanted to reflect what their town's citizenry was feeling. So, you know, you're talking, and we're going to see what, we still have time, so there may be more towns. And I think there's a possibility of a multi-town coalition, if that is something that could be possible, you know, resources, information, who knows? It's up to the towns.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Will?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for being here and for Margaret for coming as well. No, I certainly learned a lot today, and I think it's important to learn more about the intervener process and do whatever it takes for us to be part of the process. But again, thank you for being here, and I sure will continue to learn some more in the next couple of months. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank you. And it was always, at least my intention as an individual member of this board, to become an intervener. So I just wanted you to know that, and for our residents, I want them to know that whether or not the individuals choose to become interveners, it's in the town's best interest to certainly have claimed that intervener status. That gives us greater standing down the road, and that's very, very important. I agree with my colleagues that that's a process we need to track, and we'll see where this goes. There's nothing actionable here tonight, but I just want to say thank you for the time that you've spent on your presentation and the information that you provided, both, you know, to this board and to our community who's watching at home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible for us to make a comment? Anybody?
You know, I had asked earlier about for comments. I don't want to inhibit comments. Um, you know, I had asked earlier about, uh, for comments. I don't want to inhibit comments. I'm just running so far behind. If you have a brief comment, I'd, uh, if you're going to represent everybody so that we don't have everybody.
Oh, I don't know about that. Um, but I, I just wanted to, um, say that one part of this.
So they can hear you on TV.
Right.
One part of this process that has bothered me is that, like, when they had that scoping period, it was very little notice out there. It was very, I mean, if I hadn't known certain people, I wouldn't have known about that. Um, Ann O'Connor made a wonderful presentation there. I made a short presentation. I really made a, a big push for not having, um, to pay that tax. Since I'm, you know, a senior citizen with electric heat, um.
And you've won that case now. Thankfully.
And, uh, and Carolyn had spoken there too, but, you know, and again, I didn't know about this until when Christina called me. And we probably, none of us probably would have known if we hadn't known Carolyn and, and Rand. So this, and, and because it's a complicated topic. It's very hard to talk about to your neighbors about it because none of us, most of us don't have quite the, most items, certainly don't have the level of expertise on this. That they have. They've been studying and working on it for a few, a couple of years now anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy. All right. All right. Uh, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it again. Moving on to the next agenda item, we have the Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been informed by the Milford National Bank and Trust Company. Uh, they have donated a nine eleven remembrance plaque to the town. Uh, they had installed that plaque on their building, uh, obviously at the time of nine eleven. As a remembrance plaque. Um, they now have removed it and they were looking for a destination for the plaque. They organized with Fire Chief Tui and it's been installed in front of the Spruce Street Fire Station. So I want to thank them and the Fire Chief, um, for, for that kind donation.
What a great, what a great location.
Pictures there just fits very naturally, uh, I think you'll, you'll agree.
Standing.
So I want to thank them for that. Um, I'm pleased to report the repairs to the entrance at the Senior Center were completed this past weekend. Uh, as you know, the pavers at the entranceway were lifting and posing a safety issue. Uh, four inch, four inch concrete was installed. Making it safer and easier for individuals using the center. I want to thank Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin for his actions, uh, in finishing that project. In a very timely manner. And there's some photos if you'd like to take a look. The Milford Park Commissioners would like to thank Gail Nielsen and her work crew from Lowe's, who chose Louisa Lake as their heroes project. This is a voluntary event, which provides Lowe's employees an opportunity to make a positive impact in our community. Dozens of Lowe's employees painted picnic tables and benches, put mulch and planted mums, cleaned the parking area, repainted lines. They replaced two grills and, uh, if you do go down there, you'll see that the work resulted in a significant improvement, uh, to Louisa Lake picnic areas. Fire Chief Tui has informed me the department has picked up a DEP oil spill and response trailer, uh, which will be housed at the Birch Street Station. The state has positioned a number of these trailers around the Commonwealth and chose Milford as one of the areas to position one. These will be dispatched at the request of the DEP to handle a spill, uh, in any waterway. Um, I'm also pleased to report the town of Milford has been awarded a recycling dividends grant in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. Uh, this grant is awarded to communities that have implemented specific programs and policies. Proven to maximize reuse, recycling and waste reduction. I want to thank Paul Nazakelli for his work in securing this important grant. Next item is again, Fire Chief Tui and Highway Surveyor Scott Christofouli have assisted the town. And we will be purchasing a new bucket truck to replace the vehicle that was damaged in a fire last February. Uh, the vehicle is a nineteen ninety-two international, uh, vehicle with only thirty-three thousand miles and it will be purchased from the town of Westboro. The cost to the town is seven thousand dollars and will be paid from the self-insurance fund. Um, so again, uh, good work on their part. Uh, two other items, um, during the storm over Labor Day, a decorative pole in front of the town hall was damaged. Um, our Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin, um, provided immediate response and repairs were made very quickly to prevent inju, any injury or any further damage. One other item, um, I just want to report to the board that we had a department head meeting on September eighth of, uh, this past week. Uh, a number of presenters, uh, were at the, uh, department head meeting. Uh, there were updates by Town Council on the public records law update. I provided updates on the procurement law. That has changed both as a result of the Governor's Modernization Act. Um, Benefits Coordinator Kelly Capice, um, provided. Uh, new rules and regulations for handling of new hire and exit interview processes. Attendance submission and process forms have now been centralized through the Benefits Coordinator, Coordinator. And she is also now instituting workplace poster requirements. Um, two other items, uh, the IT manager. Reviewed, uh, the ticket system again for everyone so that we make sure we're using it properly. Uh, and finally, the Finance Director, um, again. So prior to town meeting, uh, reviewed the capital plan process for each of the department heads so that they have a clear understanding of what's expected of them. Uh, going forward. And there's the final thing, Mr. Chairman, is that I just want to remind people our next, we will meet next Monday, September nineteenth for a selectmen meeting. We will not meet on September twenty-sixth, so our next meeting subsequent to that should be October third. Uh, and that's all I have, sir.
And it's our intention to, uh, address the warrant articles then?
Yes.
Just to give folks a heads up and if there's information you need, please see Rick. Rick, there's so many things I could talk about and so many great things happening. Uh, I think you listed eight or nine things.
Yes.
Uh, when, when we're talking about a couple of things that you mentioned that are high priority for this board and individuals. And I know yourself, addressing those safety issues. So if there's a storm issue, uh, Carlos addressing it quickly. The safety issue is related to some of our most vulnerable, our seniors at the Senior Center. Uh, appreciate the quick response by you and the staff, Carlos and others. Um, certainly want to, you know, thank Paul for his work for the, the, the grant and the recycling. Um, just all around great activity. Uh, I'm glad to see, you know, the department heads and you organizing those department head meetings. Just lots of great stuff happening and, uh, you know, folks will think that, you know, municipal government is sitting idle in the summer. Clearly it's not because there's a lot of things happening where people are doing great work. Um, any questions or comments? I'll go, Will, you first for.
Uh, no, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Rick. Uh, as Bill said, there certainly is a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff happening. That was a sizable report. Thank you very much.
Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, how appropriate that on the fifteenth anniversary of September eleventh. The, uh, plaque, um, in our town was moved to, you know, I think a very meaningful location, the fire station on Main Street. Um, you know, the downside is I'm going to miss seeing it as I walk back from Milford Federal to my office. Because it was always on the side of the old Milford National, uh, Bank. Um, you know, thi, this was organized by Tony Brenner. And I think Tony Brenner alone. Um, and I remember, uh, when it was put up. Um, you know, we, we really should reach out to Virginia and, as, as a board. Um, and I think thank her, um, for Tony's contribution. Not, not only on this particular item, but on all of the many things that Tony, and of course, Virginia was a partner in, in.
Sure.
All or many of his projects. But, um, I, I, I would like to have this board reach out to Virginia. Maybe ask her to come in and have a thank you, um, or at least contact her and see what, you know.
Availability.
Like to do. You know, I remember when we had the anniversary of, there was the one year anniversary of September eleventh. And everybody was really trying to think about what was appropriate and what needed to be done. Because it was something new to all of us. Communities across the state were looking at different ways to commemorate the, uh, the day. And I remember what Milford, uh, came up with at that time. Um, what we did was we, we rang the bell in the tower. Uh, right at the moment that the plane hit, uh, one of the planes hit the, hit the towers. And, um, I remember that and, and it was a very moving time. Um, and this plaque kind of captures. That feeling, um, that emotion and it, it, it really is appropriate. It, it really has come home now.
Yeah, and seeing it at the fire station with so many firemen that lost their lives, it seems so appropriate that it, it, it be. A first responder location for our community. I think there's a couple of things that struck me in this fifteenth anniversary too. Number, number one, I think, uh, when we think about freshmen entering high school today, who were not born when that, uh, when those towers came down. They may never, you know, really know the personal impact that it had. And then I think sometimes people forget that. You know, two of those flights originated in Boston and, uh, just forty-five miles down the road. So, uh, we had a powerful weekend and for anybody who had an opportunity to view or participate in a remembrance. I know, uh, Rob Tassino, who was a first responder police officer in New York City at the time, went back for the fifteenth. Uh, he was telling me about that ahead of time, so interested to catch up with him and, uh, get his thoughts. But you're right, it, it's home and, uh, it belongs with first responders and certainly firemen. Well, thank you, Rick. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we're going to go to the Town Administrator Dog Hearing Officer Amendment to Contract. And, um, uh, we've had an opportunity to review the amended agreement. Uh, I'd look for a motion. This looks to be consistent with what we discussed.
Well, I can't wait to make this motion.
Yeah.
I will gladly make this motion. Another question I have is, you know, boy, under the old dog officer, we had a lot of hearings. I don't see too many now with the new fellow. Um, but I would move to approve this.
Second, second.
I'll also vote in favor and, uh, pass this along for signing. Next, we have Town Administrator, uh, discussing the warrant. This is a prelude to the warrant. There's nothing that compels us to vote or, but I would like to have some, uh, a little bit of discussion on some of the proposed articles. Um, Rick?
Yeah, there were three that I wanted to bring, uh, to the board's attention, two that were probably talked about before. But, um, one is the injured on duty for police and fire. Uh, under the Governor's Modernization Act. We can now create a special injury indemnity fund for injured on duty medical bills. So I would like the board to consider an article to create such an account. I have reviewed the request with both Town Council and Finance Director. So that, uh, they could understand how we would implement it and they could assist me in making sure that this is what we should do. And then we're going to come up with a number, um, to fund that account. And, um, one of the issues I have at present is unfortunately, we've expended about two thirds of our budget.
Right.
Unfortunately, to date, only two months into the year. So, um, that's an article I would like the board to strongly consider. Uh, and consider. Um, uh, the second one that's been discussed is, uh, uh, as you know. We have an earmark in the amount of eighty-four thousand for the Police Department and JAG to maintain a regional abuse outreach and intervention program. In the greater Milford area. Uh, again, I've prepared an article should the board decide to provide, uh, additional funding to this program. Uh, I have had conversations, uh, with the police chief and as I know, I know probably you have also. Um, and, uh, there was talk about doing it on a per capita basis and in possibly involving, uh, surrounding towns. To see what their level of interest would be. I've also had discussions with Town Council, uh, and the Finance Director again. To see how we might, uh, set up, implement.
Regional.
And make sure we're doing it in, in the proper fashion. So, uh, hopefully that's something the board would look to consider. And the, uh, final one that I'd like to discuss from a selectmen standpoint. Um, the, as you know, the Route sixteen Main Street rebuilding project is scheduled for two thousand nineteen. There was some talk it could be moved sooner. Uh, the issue would become, do we need to start putting money aside, uh, for possible land taking and or easements? Um, I think the Highway Surveyor, I know the Highway Surveyor has an article for funding for completion of the seventy-five percent engineering and design. So that may dictate, um, do we do it now or do we do it later? Um, but that is also something that the board may want to consider. Um, uh, as a selectmen and or highway or joint article.
You said, um, Route sixteen in Main Street, you mean Route sixteen one forty, the hospital?
Yeah, well, up Main Street one forty. Yes, I'm sorry.
Some portion of Main Street.
Correct. Yes, that's correct. Pretty much up to the Hope Deal line. Yeah.
So, so we know that that tip project is slated to come out in twenty nineteen. And we, we know from Rick's update from, uh, Region Three Mass Highway. That they were at least then considering, uh, moving that forward to twenty eighteen.
That is a possibility, yes.
And we also know that with projects like this, there's a certain amount of the dollars associated with that program. Or with any effort like that, that, uh, the burden is on the municipality for, uh, land acquisition. And so, um, I think what we're going to need here is some estimates. Um, from engineering.
Okay.
Uh, that, that number being given to, and, and again, it's best estimate. Because right now, we're talking about five and ten year capital plans. We're talking about letting our financial community understand. What's coming down the pike. Um, and I guess best, I don't know, worst case, best case. In the, in the longest term, it's twenty nineteen.
Correct.
In the shortest, it's, uh, next fiscal year. So we've got to start putting money aside, whether this is the year and whether we have a sense of foot to ballpark. It's something I think that this board needs more information on before we can make that estimate.
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, the, the plans aren't even drawn yet, are they?
Yeah, the twenty-five.
For what the takings are going to be?
Right.
Not yet.
We don't know what the plans are.
No, that.
Um, so I, I think it's highly speculative at this point to try to figure out what numbers are until we know what kind of land takings they're looking at. And then if you look back at the project that was done, uh, Main Street, uh, previously, there were a number of land takings. I think totaled, oh my gosh, fifty to sixty, whatever it was.
Were donated.
A large amount of those were donated to the town.
Yeah, and.
Uh, many, many people donated the land. I know I did around, around our building. And some of the parcels were almost infinitesimal, you know, a matter of five to six feet. So, um, it, it could go a lot of different directions depending upon what, what the plans look like. So I, I, I don't know how you, you know, put a number on that at this particular point or if, if we even have to.
Yeah, I think at the twenty-five percent, uh, stage, I think, uh, or nearly at the twenty-five percent stage, they've got it mapped out. And we should be able to make some estimates. I think, I think if nothing else, we're prompting a dialogue that needs to happen. And, uh, making sure that FinCom and everybody else is, uh, aware. Uh, of what our estimates are and where we might go, uh, with that. Um, I, the number that Scott's looking for to get it to the seventy-five percent level is ninety K?
I want to say ninety, yes.
Roughly, okay.
Yes.
All right, and that's something we should support. I think that, uh.
Yeah, no question about that.
Certainly that Route sixteen one forty is of vital strategic interest to us from an economical standpoint, from a safety standpoint. There's a lot of reasons why that, that intersection needs to be improved. So, uh, injured on duty, is there, uh, any information or anything anybody needs other than they're going to come up with a figure? But in concept, uh, can we say that the board is, uh, has a consensus that we're supportive of, uh, that initiative?
Uh, y- yes, it seems to make a lot of sense. Um, I, I did have a question on it.
Yep.
Because oftentimes these, these injured, uh, situations have a third party recovery. So is this designed to be similar to a revolving account? So if that third party recovery comes in. Would it be going into this account to replenish it? Or does that come in as a general receipt?
I think we'd have to look at the account as it's set up, but it may come in as a general receipt. Again, I have to talk, actually Jerry just walked in the room, but, um.
But in which case we could at town meeting appropriate it back to the fund.
Yeah. The nice.
Get it back into that revolving.
About this account, depending what we used the prior year, then we would augment it in a successive year.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had some, you know, a run of, uh, folks that have been injured.
Unfortunately, recently, yes, yes. Legitimate, serious injuries.
Yeah, being injured on behalf of the community.
Yeah, yeah, the only question I would have on that, and I'm sure the FinCom's going to address it, is how do we handle the third party recovery? You know, to me, it would make sense to just pass it directly back into that account.
If we could, right.
So that, you know, we're not.
Agreed.
Running around chasing thirteen thousand dollars here or whatever. But yeah, no, it's obviously a, a very important piece of what goes on.
And Rick had indicated in his minutes that, uh, it was my belief too, that we had a consensus for an earmark, uh, to help, uh. Grant match, uh, the eighty-four K provided by the state. The per capita, uh, one dollar per, per person, per capita number would come out to twenty-eight K, uh, for the community. And, um, unfortunately, we didn't have, have an opportunity to have our meeting. There was a death in my family. And Tom was very busy with, uh, the incident that, uh, and the fatality that happened on Main Street. At the same time we were supposed to have the meeting. Um, but I think in general, I think we can talk about. But I think in general, I think we can talk about it at a high level. We're talking about a regional approach, as the state talked about with their 84,000. We're also talking about smaller portions of the program being components where we work with the hospital. Another portion of that effort being working with the school department. And the bulk of any funds that we take in for regional support going to addicts and their families for services. So if the board is okay, and I think it's appropriate at this time that we identify what that number is, we'd match earmark when the earmark comes in. And we're talking about a number of $28,000 for, to address the opiate crisis. And hopefully, there's a federal component that's gonna be coming out soon. I know the federal government's been talking about it, but in an election year, it seems like everything else stalls. So I don't know, wanna get your impressions and I'll go to you, see what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think the chief has done a great job in this program, you know, with JAG, doing something that, you know, I think is innovative. I know it's been happening in Gloucester with much more aplomb, that, you know, Tom has really done it under the radar and done a great job, you know, along with Amy on this. I guess going forward, at least through the Finance Committee and certainly through town meeting, we would have to have, I think, a, you know, fairly detailed proposal as to exactly what we're looking to do.
And I think we have that.
Is that gonna be local? Is it gonna be regional? I mean, I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. You know, my philosophy always is, you know, try to crawl before we can walk. So, I mean, certainly, it's an area that needs resources. I guess what I'm looking for is, what is the program that we're gonna be, you know, providing the resources for? What are the goals of the program? How it's gonna work day to day?
Yeah, I think we have that. I think we have that in the grants that we've reviewed that have gone through, through the Police Department, through JAG, and some of the information we provided to state government in order to get the earmark on the books. There's some of the information that I think it would be helpful for this board to have. And I think we can do that before and during the October town meeting, most certainly. But if the, if this board, you know, we're talking about basically, you know, about $110,000, which is not gonna last very long anyway. We're hoping that through our demonstration, our leadership, that other communities will wanna join us. And a per capita basis of the dollar per person is not so significant and so strapping for communities. You know, I would say this, we're spending it anyway, right? We're spending it in a lot of different places in our services that we provide. So I think relatively short money at $28,000. I don't know, Will, any thoughts?
No, I'm, this is something that we've talked about at past meetings, something that I think, you know, this board supports and should support. I think it's just a matter of what do we need to make that decision and by when?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I think the final vote would be by this board. Put it on the warrant would need to happen by next week.
By next meeting.
And I think we can get some information from Amy at that time, but certainly in preparation for. I think what you would receive now is what John has received in order to get to the point of the earmark. I think what we need to have by town meeting is ultimately what we envision that program looking like.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And that was our intent, our best-laid plans, but we didn't have an opportunity to meet the last time. And Amy's here, if there's any questions that anybody has, she's here just in case there was a question.
I have the document for you. I can send it over to you.
All right.
Because I shortened it up.
Good, good, good. And, you know, we've just gotta reschedule our meeting. Hopefully, nothing else catastrophic happens the day that we plan on having it. Okay?
So Mr. Chairman, these three, we'll have a conversation with, about these next week?
Yeah, I think injured on duty needs a dollar amount. And the third-party question is one that Rick's gonna look into. The earmark, the grant matching at 28K is something I'd like to see, but it depends on how this board feels going forward, if they have sufficient information. And then the Route 16-140, I, you know, let's, let's see if the Engineering Department is able to estimate what land takings might be and see if that number is so significant, we ought to put some money aside. Otherwise, this board's in a position to be able to be supportive of the 75% engineering plans that Scott's gonna be looking for at approximately $90,000.
Okay.
And then, you know, not to leave this out, but I just wanna make sure I include the other things that we've looked at within our first-year plan. I'm sorry, our five-year plan that will be coming up this year that we've not discussed tonight.
Okay, I'll have a-
So those are, but those we discussed, those we looked at, I just don't wanna surprise anybody next week when they see those in part of the discussion, right?
I'll have a listing for the board of all articles.
Yeah, there's not a lot there.
No.
Off the top of my head, we know there's $25,000 for the fourth year of the police chief computers. We know that you just took care of the safety issue out of the existing maintenance budget. So that light item will fall off of our emergency requirement for October town meeting. And heaters?
Heaters for this floor, sprinklers for the attic.
Okay.
And the cloud software system for the building commission.
Okay. So those things just keep in mind. And if there's more information that you need before those come up for a discussion Monday, if you just ask the Town Administrator. Next, we have a request from the Building Committee for Woodland. And it's, Police Chief has communicated that he agrees with the request from the Building Committee to restrict left-hand turns. I'll-
I'll make a motion?
Yeah.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have from the Morganelli de Gregorio family, a note here. And I'll read from the note. It's from Rick Vilani. It says, he was contacted, the Morganelli and de Gregorio families would like to donate a gift in memory of David Morganelli, who is, some of you should recall, and I know all of you do recall, but the public may not, that Dave was a very active member of this community and certainly he was a member of the FinCom. They'd like to donate a granite bench and have it placed at Town Hall. It was originally scheduled to be put at the farmer's market, but with the farmer's market closing earlier than anticipated and not sure of its status, we think we can find a home for sure at Milford Town Hall. And I think it just comes down to us accepting a gift and the Morganelli family and de Gregorio family working with Rick to find the exact right location.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is there a motion to approve this?
Glad to move to approve that with honor and respect for David.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that. And I'm happy to make that unanimous. It's very thoughtful of the Morganelli de Gregorio family. And Dave was a great person and he's missed. Okay, with that, that's unanimous. Next, we have Gutierrez Company proposal for town meeting article. We have paperwork. This has not gone for hearing yet, is that correct? Has not had a public hearing?
The FinCom has discussed it, but they would do a public hearing, I believe, on October 4th, should the vote, should the board vote to put this on the warrant.
The FinCom.
Ah, FinCom, I'm sorry, planning board.
That's all right.
Planning board's October 4th.
October 4th.
October 4th.
So I'll move to approve, to place it on the warrant.
You know, we haven't placed anything else on the warrant. Why don't we just put this for next week, what we're gonna place on the warrant? Because, you know, I've not heard the feedback from the planning board yet. I'm not sure just yet that I wanna put it on the warrant. Let me look into, I'll ask what the favor of the board is, see if they want this to go forward now, can you wait a week?
I'm not sure what the planning board's advertising schedule is for the public hearing, but they're looking to have the public hearing on October 4th. And I would imagine you'd wanna try to give people as much notice as possible if they do have questions or concerns about it. So I don't see any harm. In fact, I think it's a good thing to try to get this before them as soon as possible.
If I can, just as a matter of law, you have to transmit it to the planning board. That's your function tonight. You automatically, any zoning object that comes in, you vote to transfer it to the planning board. They vote to public here. Whether or not you put it on the warrant is a question you can answer tonight or later. But what you do have to do is transmit it to the planning board.
Okay, so we can remand this discussion to the planning board and decide next week whether they're gonna put it on the warrant?
So I would move to remand it to the planning board for the public hearing.
Second it.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, we have a request from the Italian vets for a one-day liquor license.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could move that to next week.
I didn't see it, so I was gonna ask, okay, we'll move that to next week?
I was missing something.
Yeah.
Looking around here.
It didn't come in, so we'll look at it next week. All right, items of correspondence. We have a memo from Town Council, Jerry Moody, as it relates to public records law and amendments attached to the background for the board for public records law that was just passed as Chapter 21. The Acts of 2016 has indicated in the memo, these changes are significant and take effect January 1st, 2017. There's nothing that compels us to move on this now. Jerry notes that, and Jerry's in the room, I don't mean to talk about him as if he's- He's left us. But I'm not gonna call on you yet, Jerry, unless there's a question. Basically, what it requires, what the new act will require is by January 1st, 2017, that the municipality identify, and the Board of Selectmen specifically identify, a records access officer. And within that, Jerry notes that typically, they come to either the Board of Selectmen's office for information or to his office, the legal department. Is there any thoughts on this?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, and whether you answer it or if Jerry can. Jerry, it's, is it your recommendation that we make the Town Administrator the? Or is that, is that what they're asking? Because the only reason I ask, because in any, every agency, including the one I work for now, everything goes to the Law Department. And then they decide whether the FOIA request or anything else that they're making is first something that they can answer, and then they kind of assign it to a department head and, you know, we kinda get it back. So I just didn't know if that should go to Rick or if that really should go to you.
You have to name a records access officer. You do have to name one.
Yep.
It shouldn't be me, because I'm the guy who's gonna defend the things. And the records access officer will work with me inevitably. And again, it can be anybody, but in my view, the common sense person is the-
So the reason it's not you, it's kind of a check and balance, or?
It is, yeah. And my role would be advisory to that person and to represent. I can't be the records access officer and then represent the record access officer.
Okay. Jerry, how much-
I'm trying to escape work. There'll be plenty of work for me.
Besides somebody being the RAO.
That makes sense.
And if it were Rick, how much of this is new work?
Well, there's a lot in the act that's new. Not all new, but there are new aspects to it. One thing the RAO has to do is actually has to develop guidelines that will guide all town departments in responding. And there's new requirements for the town departments, so say a request comes into the library. Well, the normal course of events, they'll respond in due course, but then they're gonna work and they're gonna notify the records access officer so he or she is aware of it, and can make sure it's all done correctly and following the guidelines. There's a lot that's new in the act, particularly in terms of electronic reproduction and that kind of thing. It's gotta be handled carefully. And it is better than central. It actually, in that effect, in reality, it's always sort of centralized, because it always comes back to my office and to the Town Administrator for all these other departments who seldom face it, but we face it more often. So that really won't change.
So is there, this is, it sounds like it's just a new structure in how it's done and some additional requirements, but for the most part, it's work that we do today when somebody asks for information.
It is. It's just, it's mandated, and now there'd be the central authority on it, the sort of the final word on records access. But still, the work will be done by the departments in large measure.
Okay.
That it will?
Yeah, not that answered my question.
I would move to appoint the Town Administrator Records Administrator Officer.
And what I'm hearing is that work.
Records access, I'm sorry, records access officer.
How much of that work is being done at Rick's level today?
That's the reality.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, I'll vote unanimously. In favor, and that's unanimous.
I tried.
Jerry was playing matador. Any other items of correspondence that the board members would like to review?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Nor do I.
Neither do I. Oh, there was, there was an item of correspondence that I received. I received it via social media, so I'll, I just wanna call it out that, you know, a local businessman in town who took it upon himself, and that's Josh LeOch of LeOch Properties, to put out signs and deliver signs to people who are supportive of our Police Department. I think it's just, it's just a nice touch. And it's certainly, you know, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I wanted to say personally, thank you for going out and doing that, spending your own money to do that. This community has always supported its public safety officers and its first responders, its police and its fire. And it was just a nice touch by a businessperson I just wanted to call out. And I was happy to have run down a sign and picked one up myself, so. That's all I had. So with that, we have planned executive session this evening. We have a meeting to discuss with Town Council fighter fires contract. A portion of that agenda is to review with Town Council the water company update on progress with that process. And a request that we'll honor by meeting with the police union to discuss proposed civil service, a change, potential change to civil service. With that, I'll take a vote.
I'll move. Second it.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. I'll go to roll call. Will?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian and myself, I also vote in favor. We will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much.